This is what we're going to offer you.
Dave.
When they read this resolution, it's not really on my first hand. You know, in the barrel last year of the motion, you'll say, "I like it." That's what we've always done these before, where, you know, you've actually come up here and I'm the judge. Everything here, everything, some of their drivers support us.
I thought I got one of them.
It has to say jobs.
Go down there.
What happened to people who have damage caused to their property or cars? They're required to come into the city and file a claim of pollution. They sign the claim on what the damage is. What it costs to do. Accept that. The body who accept that claim, then we probably have to try and do it for that. Next with that. We have to prove that we feel it's one of the stops. This comes from the Audit Committee. Every bill that each department takes runs up, they have to buy whatever they have to buy, whether it's water, pipe, or anything, it has to be approved by the council. So each month we get a schedule of bills that they want to buy, things they want to buy. Lenders, this is all global help. This gentleman here wants to sell. To do that, you have to buy a license and a suit. And we have to prove it. Now, we need to buy some materials for instruction. We have to advertise to anybody at all.
Please rise to salute the flag.
Let the Americans stand in the light of the United States of America, under the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every and just as.
In this mass of utter confusion that we'll call a meeting this evening, I'm pleased to be here. There are some times that being mayor is more fun than others, and tonight is one of those times that it's more fun. We're blessed this evening with students, seniors from the G. Ray Badley High School. They're part of a government participation program at the high school, and they're here as a result of the Elks Organization. And I'd like to take just a moment so that you folks know who's responsible for this program, and introduce you to Wayne Stewart. Wayne is the exalted ruler of the Elks. Dave Teramigi, who is the leading knight of the Elks. And Nicholas Hopman, who is the Americanism Chairman of the local Elks Club. I was surprised to learn this evening that the Elks Organization is the second largest provider of college scholarships for the youth across America, bested only by the federal government. And that's pretty special, to think that this group is that supportive of our young people, because these young people are our future. And these young folks that are here this evening, these seniors, have a taste of participating in local government. And I think participation means achievement. It's the participation that's felt by this council, and the participation that I would hope we'd see in the future in our younger people about the firm obligation that we all have. And it's the obligation to make where we are a better place for having been there. We inherited a city with a lot of problems. We inherited a city that needed a great deal of fixing. We inherited a city that needed to have its attitude changed, and we inherited a city that needed to have some of its old ways changed. This council has made a commitment, as I hope these young folks will in the future make that same commitment, to make those changes that we so desperately need across this country. Takes a great deal of personal sacrifice by both this common council, by the department heads in this city, and I hope, personal sacrifice by the students that are sitting with us and joining us this evening, to work to make our city a better place, our state a better place, and our country a better place. And we do that very simply. And I hope that they leave here this evening with one message. They do that by being willing to work harder than the next guy. We work to solve problems. And I think that when they leave here tonight, they're going to leave here with a charge. They're going to leave here knowing a little something about government, knowing a little something about problem solving, and knowing that they'll be indebted for the rest of their life until they make the place that they are a better place, just as the people ahead of us made this place a better place for us. And I want to thank the students that are here this evening, and thank all of you for coming. Before we get started, are there any changes, additions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mayor, I have an addition. As you know, Monday evening, the City Recreation Department will be embarking on a new program. The Recreation Superintendent Barry Ostrander is here with us tonight, and he would like to give a brief overview of what is taking place and an update.
Do we want to put that before the discussion on Fulton Terminals or after the Woodlands?
Probably before.
I'll ask Mr. Tietro to introduce these young people who are with us this evening. Mr. Tietro?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have representing Mayor Bullard, Rachel Schrempf. Representing our City Administrator, Joseph Ayala, will be Krista Duttinger. Representing our First Ward Alderman, John Lincoln, will be Chris Buckloo. Representing our Second Ward Alderman, James Teramigi, will be Chris Acom. Representing our Third Ward Alderman and Council President, Robert Weston, Rochelle Rowley. Representing our Fourth Ward Alderman, Joseph Cavallaro, will be Craig Miles. Representing our Fifth Ward Alderman, Catherine Trollbridge, will be Krista Palmeroy. Representing our Sixth Ward Alderman, Timothy Allen, will be Tina Munger. Representing our City Court Judge, Fred Sumner, will be Mel Rex. Representing our City Attorney, Jerome Arvito, will be Mary Murdock. Representing myself, a city clerk, will be Mark Percy. Representing our City Chamberlain, James Lobota, will be Chris Kozlowski. Representing our City Engineer, Neil Beebe, will be Becky Bovey. Representing our Police Chief, Michael Stafford, is Adam Howard. Representing our Fire Chief, Marvin Jensen, will be Scott Palmer. Representing our Recreation Superintendent, Barry Ostrander, will be Jeff Dahlberg. Representing our DPW Commissioner, Raymond Graham, will be Sarah Glisten. Representing our Water and Sanitation Commissioner, Roger Parsons, will be Sean Haney. Representing our Building Zoning Inspector, Stephen Lund, will be Jennifer Short. Representing our City Assessor, Diane Moore, will be Jessica Brack. Representing our Housing Plumbing Inspector, Bryce Talis, will be Keith Hasmer. Our advisors are Mr. Moore, Ms. Keys, and Mr. Fiora de Malva.
Clerk, will you please call the rule?
Mayor? First Ward?
Here.
Second Ward?
Present.
Third Ward?
Here.
Fourth Ward?
Here.
Fifth Ward?
Here.
Sixth Ward?
Here.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Resolve that the minutes of the Common Council meeting held on April 19th, 1994 hereby approved. I move that.
Second, please?
I'll second it.
Second.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve the following claims against the City of Fulton hereby referred to our City Attorney for his action. Summon's notice submitted by Chemical Mortgage Company regarding mortgage foreclosure on premises located within the City of Fulton. Letter of claims submitted by Mary Christie, damages to her vehicle alleged to have occurred on April 1. She hit a pothole on West First Street in Batavia. Letter of claims submitted by Lisa Tenasco for damages to her vehicle alleged to have occurred on April 2. She hit a pothole on West First Street in Batavia. Letter of claims submitted by April Wahlberger for damages to her vehicle alleged to have occurred on April 9. She hit a pothole on North Sixth Street.
Can I have a motion, please?
I move it.
A second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the vehicle and traffic ordinance City Fulton, New York hereby is hereby amended to read as follows. Subsection 16550, prohibited turns and intersections. Holly Drive, direction of travel east, direction of turn left, hours, all hours at the intersection of Emery Street. Subsection 16514, restricted access areas. Emery Street at Holly Drive for westbound traffic be posted, do not enter. Subsection 16545, traffic control signals, delete, South First Street and Anita Street. Subsection 16546, schedule two, speed limits, delete, Namas Street, Route 481, speed limit 45 miles per hour, location from Shaw Street north to North City Line. Subsection 16548, schedule four, one-way streets, delete, Namas Street, Keuga Street, direction of travel east, limits from South First Street to South Second Street.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Before we vote on this, for the information of the people here tonight, these were ordered by the State of New York, all of these changes.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the schedules of bills payable number 35 through number 40 of 1994, which have been previously approved by the Common Council Auditing Committee, are hereby approved.
Motion?
Move.
I'll move.
All in favor? Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas, at a meeting of the Common Council held on July 21st, 1987, a resolution was passed allowing vendors to vend their goods and wares in the area known as Bullhead Point, subject to said vendors obtaining a license from the city clerk's office, and subject to approval of this common council, and whereas Dale Earl, RR number 5, Box 719, Fulton, New York, 13069, has applied for a vendor's license to sell farm produce from July 19th, 1994, through July 18th, 1995, at said Bullhead Point. Now therefore be it resolved that this common council hereby approve the application for a vendor's license by Dale Earl, and directs the city clerk to issue said license in accordance with the requirements as specified in the Fulton City Code.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that this common council directs the city engineer to prepare specifications, and also directs the city clerk to advertise to receive sealed bids in his office in the municipal building located at 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, on or before May 19th, 1994, up to 4:00 p.m., to be publicly opened at 4:15 p.m. in the common council chambers of the municipal building, to furnish the City of Fulton with construction materials for the South Fourth Street and Utica Street capital project in accordance with specifications prepared by city engineer Neil Beebe.
Would somebody like to move?
Move.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
These construction materials are the materials which will be used to be the improvement project between Utica, between Fourth and Fifth Streets, Utica and Rochester Street, which is new infrastructure, new sewer, new water lines, sidewalks, new street, new curving, and housing improvement program.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the City Chamberlain transferred $20,000 from the F-909 unallocated funds account to the F-8340.212 transmission and distribution account.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Second.
This past winter, the city had at least 250 frozen water lines, which it normally don't have. Twenty-six breaks, of which 10 of those breaks were considered major water line breaks. Probably for at least a 60-day period, they were working seven days a week on those problems. Merely a transfer of money within the water, the garbage, to pay those overtime costs.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Notation, that the appointment by Mayor Bullard of Robert Groff, PO Box 786, Mexico, New York, to the Electrical Board to fill the unexpired term of Thomas Hunter, effective immediately and to expire December 5th, 1994, is hereby entered into the minutes of the meeting of May 3rd, 1994, as a matter of record. Resolve that this common council allocate $2,000 to the Memorial Day Salute Committee for Memorial Day weekend, said cost to be a direct charge to the A-6511.49 Promotion of Tourism account. This is a budgeted item.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the police chief is hereby authorized to purchase one new and unused 1994 Ford Crown Victoria from AMI Municipal Vehicles, 235 Boston Post Road West, Marlborough, Massachusetts, 01752, at a cost of $16,819 plus interest, to be a direct charge to the A-3120.20 Police Department account. This qualifies as an emergency purchase per the criteria of the state comptroller's procurement policy.
Chief Stafford, will you please speak about this?
We had a vehicle involved in an accident during a pursuit on Easter Sunday morning. The vehicle was severely damaged to the point where the insurance company decided to total the vehicle. They have issued a check in the amount of $5,487 that we will use toward the purchase of this new vehicle. The vehicle that was damaged was a high-mileage vehicle and would have been retired next year anyways. So actually, if the cloud has a silver lining, this happening, thankfully, was an older car, not one of the newer cars, and we will get money to make the first-year payment on the three-year lease purchase agreement. So it will not cost the city anything that isn't already budgeted for the first year. How many cars do we have, Chief?
Ten cars.
Ten cars? How many are still here?
Thirty-five.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Whereas Officer James Thomas was involved in a pursuit on April 3rd, 1994, and subsequently became involved in a serious automobile accident. And whereas Officer Thomas was taken to A. Lee Memorial Hospital due to serious neck, head, and leg injuries. And whereas, because of Officer Thomas' dedication to his duties and responsibilities, he reported back to work on late duty on April 12th, 1994. Whereas Officer Thomas' dedication was further proven by his reporting to full duty on April 19th, 1994. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of this common council hereby commend Officer Thomas for his dedication to duty. And be it further resolved that this common council thanks Officer Thomas for his willing attitude. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be and hereby is placed in Officer James Thomas' personnel record as an indication of his dedication.
I'll move it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the appointment by Mayor Bullard of Rebecca Munger, 772, West First Street, Fulton, New York, to the Fulton Planning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Maureen Verazoli, effective immediately and to expire February 14th, 1995, is hereby approved.
Yes.
Would someone like to move that?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on May 17th, 1994, at 7:00 p.m. in the common council chambers of the municipal building, Fulton, New York, relative to a proposed local law which would add Section C-70 to the city charter entitled "Collection and Disposal of Garbage, Refues, and Recyclables."
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried.
Mr. Ostrander?
Currently, we've just received all our fees for the Softball Program that we're going to be running, which will be starting Monday. Current fees collected total $26,600. Out of that $26,600, $8,700 have been collected in user fees. Now these fees are being dumped right back into the operation of that league. Some of the items that are being taken care of at this time are fencing, which are in despair, in dire need of repairing, along with the backstop on both ball fields. This would be foster and denosche, along with repairing the bleachers under denosche. Currently, throughout the course of the season, we'll be making improvements to both fields to make them place very safe, nice environments for the people to enjoy, to participate in our league. Along with that, I'd like to thank our board of volunteers who made this all possible. And I'd like to add a couple other personal thanks. One would be to Swigaw County Opportunities. They've sent some of their people over to Recreation Park, Bullhead Point. They've been around the areas, keeping it clean, tidy, and looking nice, along with some of the local elementary kids, and I truly appreciate that. And anybody wishing to participate in anything like that, or any groups that you're associated with, you can come and see me if you want to come in and give us a hand cleaning up certain areas to make our parks look nice for the city. And I'd also like to add a special thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Lad for their setting up the fund drive for new park equipment. Thanks again.
Thank you. Next item is a discussion item, which is an update on Fulton Terminals site. And I'll introduce Gene Piasak.
Thank you, Mayor Bullard. Common Council, student members. On behalf of FISWAC, we welcome the opportunity to give you an update on the Fulton Terminal site. And what we're going to need about a minute or so here, we have a screen we've got to set up, and we have Mr. Mike Lane of HJA Associates, our technical advisors, which we have hired through our federal grant, our tax grant, for the Fulton terminals. And if we could have a minute here to set up, and if we could separate so we could put the, our projector, so we can get to the screen?
Is that better? There we go. Okay. I would like to thank you all, and thank Gene, and thank Fulton Safe Drinking Water Action Committee for having me come here tonight, and for the opportunity to address the common council and the mayor. Before we start, I would just simply like to add to Mayor Bullard's remarks about the students here tonight. I think it's great, in this time of so much cynicism of government, to see somebody here who feels they can make a difference. who feels they can make a difference. And anybody who doesn't feel they can make a difference had better stand aside because somebody who knows they can will step in and take your place and do the things that you could have done. So it's great to see the students here. And this is part of a story also that involves people making a difference. In this case, in the town of Fulton, just to the north, a little bit across from Mimi's Restaurant, in north of the Patterson Warehouse, is a hazardous waste site. It's called the Fulton Terminal Site. It's been around since the mid-1970s. And in this case, the EPA is a federal government agency involved. And one of the standing jokes is that we're from the government, we're here to help you, which is unfortunately, in some cases, has been true. But here is a case of people from this community having an influence, and a positive influence on a large government agency such as the EPA. Here is a case where citizens, where aldermen, where the mayor, with letters, with phone calls, have gotten responses from both Washington and New York City. It's a very positive story. This site was a hazardous waste site, received wastes in the mid-1970s. This is just a small inkling of what it was like. This happened in the 70s, as I mentioned, and early 80s, when there was hazardous waste stacked and disposed on the site, waiting incineration at the Fulton, at the Pollution Abatement Services Site in the city of Aswego. These drums are just a very small residue of what was on the site, and some of which is still underground. The initial response by the EPA was a very minimal capping of the site. Capping simply means that they put a cement cover over it. Everything that was underground would still be there. Through a lot of fighting, a lot of efforts, a lot of hard work, and a long time, that initial minimal remedy has become a very extensive, what is called a remediation, that is an improvement, a removal of a lot of the hazardous waste. Some of you may have seen activity recently on the site. And this is some of the activity that in fact occurred during, it was November of last year. Just recently, in fact, last week, there was additional activity on site. As we'll see in just a minute, when I finish the slides, I have a schedule showing you what all this means. But basically, there's a big gap between when the EPA says, okay, this is what we're going to do to fix the site. There's a long time between when the EPA says that and when something actually gets done. And the reason for that is a lot of studies have to be made in the meantime. You can say, yes, I want a patio on my house, but before that's going to happen, somebody's got to figure out how much cement, how many two-by-fours, and how many pounds of nails. What's happening on site now is the hazardous waste site equivalent of what I just mentioned. They're figuring out how the water flows, how deep it is, where the contaminants are, and what they actually have to do. And all of the activity you see there is this type of process. This is a big, it looks like a big rotary lawnmower blade on the drill stem. This was part of an experimental procedure. What we're doing tonight to kind of make sure that we all know where we're going here is this is just a brief update on some of the current activities at the site. Obviously, we don't have time to do the whole history. So one of the most important current things that's happened is figuring out exactly the best way to get the contamination out of the site. This looks like a big lawnmower blade. It actually squirts steam out through it, and the reason for that is to do what amounts to a soil dry cleaning, and that is try and steam the contaminants out instead of scoop them out. It was a great idea. Unfortunately, it didn't work too well. One of the reasons it didn't work is because the soil out there has a lot of rocks in it. And when that big blade hit those rocks, something had to give, and it wasn't the rocks. So they had to go back and come up with some other remedies. This was done during evening and one night in November. This looks like an attack on the town of Volneys being readied here from a SCUD missile launcher, but it really wasn't that. It was simply the drill rig. And here's the steam that I mentioned coming out. That's just a small inkling of one of the reasons, again, I speak to you students, why it's an exciting time not only to be in government, but to be in any part of the environmental field. Because for all the problems that we're discovering, all of the horror stories that you've heard about the environment, to some extent, they're true. Maybe not as horrible as you may have heard, but there are problems. But these problems are breeding a whole series of research efforts at finding out solutions. So it's a time to be in the field and to get after the problems such as the Fulton Terminal Site. They should have made a Hollywood movie out of this. Here's some people that you should recognize. They're for a press conference on site. This again is a reflection of the interest in the, of the city in the area. The fellow in the center with the dark suit and tie is Christos Tsiamas. He is the EPA Project Manager. And if you don't think you can influence government in an organization like the EPA, think again. Sandy talks to Christos all the time. I'm sure some of the city council members, the common council members, and the mayor either have or will be talking to Christos and his colleagues in the EPA. You can get in the system, work with it, and have an effect on it. Before we get to the next, only about three slides, I just wanted to go back. That is where the folks were standing behind where that's now, in an empty space in the center. All of this activity up in the surface, it's very hard to visualize what is actually taking place under the surface. There are all sorts of diagrams and cross-sections that are made to do this, but it's difficult to do. So what we're going to do now is make believe we're in a helicopter and rocket up about 200 or 300 feet, look down from this point. Remember, we're looking, the Patterson Warehouse is at our back, Mimi's is at our right, the Aswego River is on our left. And now we're going to look with X-ray vision into the site. So here we are, up in the air. Just look at the top layer there, the top chip or wafer, if you will. You can see Shaw Street, which is the street running horizontally across the bottom of the blue area. Route 481 is on the right, the Aswego River is on the left. And what we've done is make believe that we have a bulldozer, and the top chip is the surface. And then we make believe we scoop off about six feet of soil, and then we make believe we scoop off about 10 feet for the lowermost diagram. This gives you an idea of what a worm would see or anything subsurface at that depth. Where there are colors, there are some contaminants. There is a problem. A site like the Fulton Terminal Site has two things, two separate projects that happen simultaneously. One is that the soil or the dirt has to be cleaned, and the other is the water or the saturated zone below the dirt also has to be cleaned. This deals with the soil. Where there are the colored areas, you can see that there have been or still are, in fact, contaminants. So the first part of a remedy like this is to clean the soil. Okay, that doesn't address the water, so now let's look at the water. Here again, we're looking at three layers, three make-believe bulldozer passes at the site, only a little farther down, say, running from about 10 to about 60 feet below the ground. The top layer is, say, around 10 feet, the middle layer around 30 feet, the lower layer around 40 or 50 feet. They're different materials. And as you can see, the lower layer, which is gravel, is a layer that water, we're now down below the water table, so this is saturated, where now where contamination in the water, in the aquifer, can travel most easily. Where it's red, there is a problem with contaminants. If, again, you orient yourself to the site, you see that it is where Shaw Street and North First Street intersect, that corner of the site, where in fact, when the trucks get in there next year and in subsequent years, you will see the most action. In fact, some of the studies that have been done over the past several years now are showing that the contamination extends further than we thought, and that in fact, they're going to have to go under, or at least partially under, North First Street to do some of the excavation. And this is something that clearly the city government is going to be involved in one way or another. And one final note to this bit about contamination. The Fulton Terminal Site is in the middle of several other hazardous waste or garbage sites. And in the handouts that we can't see now, but maybe we can look at for just a couple minutes after I finish the slides, you'll see a map. Anyhow, again, looking at the top layer, middle layer, the lower one, this is for arsenic. And see the red spot sneaking in on the upper right-hand side? This is near surface, or this is arsenic contamination in the shallower part of the soil layers. And from the pattern, it appears this is coming from someplace outside of the Fulton Terminal Site. This is not just a trivial matter, because this is something the EPA and the DEC, the state regulatory agency, are very much involved in. Because if it affects the cleanup that you could do at the Fulton Terminal Site, it affects whether or not you could put a park there, a bike path, however you might want to beneficially use that site. You have to clean up not only the site itself, but make sure it is clear from anything that might be flowing upon it. That's going to be one of the things you will hear more about in the next several years. I think that is the end of these, and I would like, if I could have the lights, draw your attention to the handouts for just about two minutes. I realize that this four-page handout that I put out is not nearly as pretty as the slides. It looks a bit like your history test tomorrow morning for your students, but it's really not, and there's really no test on it after this, so please relax. But I do want to, oh. But I do want to take just a moment, not to go over the whole thing, but to have you turn. The first page after the cover is simply a description of the background of the site. That's for your reference. Don't worry about it now. The second page is a map, same thing. It shows you the relationship between the site and adjacent solid or hazardous waste sites for your reference. Don't worry about it. The third page, which has this sort of graph-looking thing, or it looks like a spreadsheet with all the X's on it, that is just to reinforce something I said earlier. These cleanups take a long time. It's not the mayor's fault, it's not the common council's fault, believe it or not, it's hardly even the EPA's fault. It's just the system is set up so it takes a long time. That box that's shaded in the upper left-hand part of this, where it says decree issued, that was in 1991. Actually, this whole process started in the mid-1980s. That's how long this has been going on. But after all of the initial work, when the EPA finally signs a legal document that says, okay, this is what you're going to do, that's the box in 1991. The light shading in the lower right-hand part of this is the part where it says, or where something actually is going to get done. And if you count the years there, there are three years in between with a lot of X's in them. All those X's are what you're seeing on site now. As I mentioned, this is the planning of your patio and finding out how many pounds of nails and what color paint. That's three years' worth of fieldwork. And the single most critical thing that's come out of this, and if there's anything that I'd like you to remember tonight, it's this one thing. Out of the three years of work, there has been one significant addition to the contamination that has been found, and that's on the next page that says, what is new? What is new is out of the work that's been done to plan the cleanup, there has been significant extra or new contamination found. This has been found in what the EPA or the geologists will call a clay and silt layer underneath the site. And what happened was that in studies to check the design, extra contamination was found in the clay and silt layer. And as the second bullet mentioned, this is a problem because this new contamination is first of all deeper, second of all wetter. It's down under the water table, and it's just plain going to be a headache to get it out of there. It's something that was not anticipated. It is an addition and a complication to the cleanup. The steam stripping, the steam process was tried, it didn't work. An extra remedial design, an extra document, if you will, probably about three times the size of the document that's propping up my slide projector right now, will be hitting this area in midsummer. This will be the revised design to tell what the EPA is going to do to clean up, to deal with this wet soil. It will include some reinforcing walls, it will include some de-watering, and it will probably affect, in a sense, North First Street. It's coming. I don't know what to tell you that it is. Nobody knows at this point, but that document will be coming in the summer. And finally, the next page that has a little cartoon on it is, just turn the page, and that is a graphic summary of what I just told you. The top is what we thought the situation was in the 1980s. The contamination is in the upper shallow layer. It kind of stays away from the clay layer, which is that wedge with the little dashes in it, and the aquifer, the water-bearing layer underneath is, lives happily ever after, is clear. Unfortunately, that's not what happened. And what is happening and what has been discovered at the Fulton Terminal Site is very much in step with what is being found in hazardous waste sites throughout the country. It's not something that's unique here. Evil fortune did not impact Fulton only. A lot of people, a lot of municipalities throughout the country are seeing this. In fact, what we're finding is a whole new type of contamination, a dense phase. It's like throwing some axle grease in a bucket of water. Sinks to the bottom. It's like a doctor finding a new strain of virus just when they thought they had the cold licked. So this new breed, this new type of contamination sinks deeper, gets into the clay, and it's going to be harder to clean up. I think they will have some success in it, but it's not going to happen overnight. The last two pages are simply for your reference on some questions and answers about soil and groundwater cleanup. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Off this diagram, this aquifer, does it have a particular direction water to flow?
Question about the direction in the aquifer. In that, the water is flowing generally towards the river and probably, and I say probably and I mean it, because there's not wells drilled in this like the municipal aquifer, but probably to the north in roughly the same, in the same direction that the river is flowing. But it has not been studied to nearly the extent as your municipal well field. Thank you. Well, I would just like to thank you all for your attention. You all passed the science lesson for tonight, and hopefully the students will get some extra credit for a little excursion into hazardous waste. Thank you.
From a science lesson to a history lesson. Educational experience this evening. We have some guests here who represent a very important part of the history of this country, and they'd like to speak to us. I believe Mr. Allen and Mr. Lozerek.
It's on. Sorry, I thought he left.
I guess now it's on. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, student members, Mr. Marbido, Mr. Tietro. We're from the Woodlands people, which are, were a crucial part of this area through history. We're from the Woodlands people, which are, were a crucial part of this area through history. We came with a proposal that we have talked over with several interested people in the city. And what we are proposing is the... See, I'm not a public speaker. What we're proposing is the establishment of a living museum and tourist center. We have talked about the area in the northwest corner of North Bay recreational area. We would like to construct a Iroquois village craft area and food area. The area to be staffed by native people, be built by native people, be staffed by native people, and run by native people. Bill is going to talk a little more about what actual activities we plan on taking place if this becomes a reality.
Yawaskano. Hello. I hope everybody is feeling good, feeling fine. First of all, what we'd like to do is to educate you people. It seems like over 200 years, we've been trying to educate you people on our ways and what we think and what we do. We have a structure, we have a culture, and we have a way of life. And what we're basically trying to do is we're going to educate you young people here and all over the country to come to this place here in Fulton. We'd like to bring our culture here again to the lands of the Anadaga Territory, which you call Fulton. We'd like to educate you people to know who we are. We have crafts that our people do. We will be showing you how to make canoes, how to use the porcupine to make baskets, quill work. We will be doing silver work. We'll be doing all the things that we have. We will have foods of all kinds of animals. And these foods that we will bring and we will illustrate and to tell you and to cook for your enjoyment is not going to be made in Japan. We're going to have native people. And when you go onto this site, you're going to be greeted in our language. And we're going to have interpreters telling you exactly what we're doing and what we're all about. It's a historical thing that we're trying to present to Fulton. And we'd like to have you people approve what we're talking about. Thank you. Thank you.
It's customary at any council meeting that's been held in the Iroquois nation to give something to signify the importance of it. We have a little something that we're going to present to the city of Fulton. And the reason I chose what I chose is in the mid-'40s and late-'40s, I lived on Philip Street. North Bay was my playground. One of the greatest things that was there, as far as I was concerned, when early or late spring and early summer came, was wild strawberries. The area is loaded with wild strawberries. The customary gift that Iroquois people gave was a string of beads called wampum. What I'm giving is a string of beads that has a strawberry pattern in it. Yelly, thank you.
Does anyone from the council have any questions or comments to Mr. Lozerek or Mr. Allen?
Do we have a formal proposal on?
I think what they, I think what they'd like us to do is to prepare some sort of an agreement so that they might use a portion of the North Bay property to construct their museum, their village.
That would be forthcoming.
Council's pleasure to have the city attorney.
Okay, what I have that I will submit right now is a proposal. But it's a two-phase proposal. It involves a lot more than just what we're initially starting with. Some of the things in here aren't correct because we've had talks with the mayor about some of the things and some of his thoughts. So it pretty much covers what we've got in mind, but some of the things will need to be changed
Basically, without going into all the details on this piece of paper at the moment, they're requesting, from the city, an agreement to utilize part of the North Bay property. Certainly, we can have future meetings to negotiate the technicalities of the agreement. Council's pleasure to proceed on that.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think it'll be a great thing for the central New York area.
Yes, and a drawing card for the North Bay campsite as well.
Right.
Yes.
Proceed.
Proceed with it. Will, will Mr. Allen be talking to you?
Thank you.
By the way, I believe your target date is to have this open by June 26th, is it not?
By the time school closes. Which is really precious for time. Eventually, what we plan on... Now my voice is back. We'll take this a couple more seconds. Eventually, what we plan on, and we originally talked about it, is we're going to start with the Iroquois village. And we say it's two-phased because eventually we want to come into a project that has the Iroquois village on the east. It goes out through the Ohio Valley, through the Plain States, out to the West Coast. So that you're representative of the whole Native American setup through the whole North American continent. And at that time, we have hopes to have constructed a museum building that will be loaded with artifacts from across the North American continent. We foresee this, by its completion, being a one-of-a-kind type thing. There'll be nothing else like it in the whole North American continent. And we think it'll be a real good draw, as well as a great educational facility within Fulton. New York State, I've always been a little upset with because they teach Native American history in fourth grade and seventh grade, and it's about a three-page chapter in each of the history books. It really doesn't teach a lot. And this area is loaded with history.
I understand you have something like a three-hour videotape.
Well, I have a tape that will be three hours. I think they've worked a little over 100 hours on it, and they have 12 minutes completed. But eventually, it's going to be a three-hour segment that will be broadcast on TV.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Does anyone, does anyone else on the council have any business? Does anyone here have any business with the council?
Excuse me, your honor.
I'm sorry.
I would just like to thank the Fulton Elks for a wonderful dinner and thank Chris Bucklew for representing the first ward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I have something to say. We're talking about cleaning up Fulton Terminal site tonight. And I think it's time that we all announce some cleanup of Fulton that Mayor and the common council would like to announce of the week of May 9th through 14th will be Amnesty Week, which means that everyone has to get out and clean up the city. Clean up your property. We will be taking everything by demolition and construction debris and no hazardous household waste. Other than that, we'd like you to take the week of the 7th and 8th to get into your attics and your cellars and your side yards and your garages and every place else you've been storing trash, unwanted items. And it will be at no cost. It will be one week. This will be the only time and the last time that we will do this. And we really encourage everybody. And remember that the 8th is Mother's Day. And sons and daughters, get over and help your mothers clean up their yards. Thank you.
Mayor?
Sir?
Yes, sir. Just one item. I'd like to touch on one thing and be done with it. That being user fees. April 1st this year, user fees went into effect by legislation of this council. Mr. Osterlander touched on it briefly. Sunday, a little over $8,000 in user fees were collected from a softball program. They anticipate to collect over $10,000. The very next day, that money was dedicated to put new fences up, repair bleachers at Recreation Park and at Foster Park. So that money is already being put to use. And this council is grateful for that. That is money that would not otherwise be available through the general fund. The users of this program are paying for the repairs, and that's what we envisioned. And we thank the participants.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else have any business? Before we adjourn the meeting, I'd like to make one comment. Yesterday morning, some members of the council and the media joined the Department of Public Works at an address over on West First Street, which was a terrible problem in the neighborhood. And we, anyone that thinks that there's not a garbage problem in this city should have been with us yesterday morning. DPW took away from a single property 3,880 pounds. 3,880 pounds of stored garbage on the property. The house has been boarded up, it's condemned, and it's shut down. Those are the kind of major problems we face with garbage, ladies and gentlemen. And we're working hard to cure them. There are probably 10 or 15 more properties like that that I could take you to. Anyone else have any business with this council? Motion to go into executive session? There will be no business conducted after executive session. Do not come back out at 11 o'clock and pass resolutions. Second?
Second.
Purposes: union negotiations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for coming.